You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 19th meeting for the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.AccessLaPorteCounty.org.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting Wednesday, November 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. If everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands one nation on the ground indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please.
Commissioner Joe Haney?
Present.
Commissioner Steve Holleyfield?
Present.
And Commissioner Connie Graham Rosa?
Present.
Everyone is present, you have a quorum.
Consider agenda.
I'd like to add amendment, two amendments really. Under the proxy appointment, I'd like to add the name Jim Erwin. And 11C under new business, our December meeting date changed, scheduled for December 3rd, we need to move or cancel that because that's the ICC convention in Indianapolis, we won't be here.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of the November 5th, 2025 minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
Move to approve the payroll as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense claims, $2,480,818.43.
Move to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Public comment. We now have a public comment. Good evening.
My name is Bob Geralt. I live at 3001 South US 35 in LaPorte. And I'm here to talk about two different topics. Number one, I would like to thank Rita Beatty from the, who is the President of the Planning Commission. I'd like to thank Steve Holleyfield. And I'd like to speak, thank Joe Haney for their efforts on the 8th of November when there was a, Steve hosted a small get together of about 100 people. And we were able to ask a lot of questions regarding data centers and what all is going to be happening in the county. It affects me and it affects many other folks. Both Steve and Joe and Rita were very, very helpful in answering a lot of questions that people had. And they were also able to provide input to the two commissioners and the planning commission president and making up the ordinance, trying to figure out what they wanted in the ordinance so that it would help them and help the county. I'm sorry that, personally sorry that Commissioner Connie was not able to make that meeting because then she could have heard a lot of people talking about the thing. Now you're going to have to get it secondhand from the two gentlemen on your left and right.
The meeting was not noticed. It was not noticed. It was not published. So if you have more than two commissioners at a meeting and it's not published, it's a violation of the open door.
Okay.
Is it a violation, Mr. DiMartino? I think we spoke about that before.
I know I had sent emails inquiring the day before about that meeting and no one could give me a clear information on that.
Right. So I didn't, I didn't, our discussion was, is this a board of commissioners meeting? And it was my understanding that you set it up. I understand Mr. Haney went there, but Mr. Haney was a resident of that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And Sipotown.
And I was invited by CBO Township Trustee.
Right. And so it wasn't a board of commissioners meeting.
No, it wasn't a board of commissioners. It was a fact finding.
But you said that they discussed the ordinance?
No, they discussed inputs that the citizens of the area would like to see put into an ordinance to eliminate a data center taking over their land, their house and their property.
Right. But that information would not even be something that the commissioners would make a decision on.
No, there was no decision made.
Excuse me.
It was just a free discussion.
Can I just please talk for one second? So that information would be taken. Ms. Beatty was there, Mr. Holleyfield was there. They would take that back to the plan commission who would be working and doing an ordinance.
And even to the next week's workshop to discuss that too.
Yes.
Yes.
So it really, really not, I understand the commissioners need to be informed on that, but right now it's at the planning commission level.
And that's probably why Rita was there representing the commission.
Good idea, yes, yes.
I was advised by the attorney not to go because of not having three attorneys there. And I did send out an email asking questions as to whether it was noticed or not. And I never received a clarity on what kind of a meeting and whether it had been noticed or not. So that is why I was not there.
And there's going to be plenty of opportunity over the next few months as you're working through this to hear input from the folks in the county.
Well, the workshop, which is next week, I believe, is non, is not open to public discussion.
No, it is not.
Between the folks here.
The nine plan commission members only.
Yep.
Which you'll be able to hear and that way you'll have information for ideas that you want to see yes or no and inputs into it.
And that was part of the reason to have that meeting on the, is to get some information from the residents because they can't speak at this meeting, the workshop meeting. Once it gets past the workshop, then there'll be a open meeting and they can discuss, we can discuss because I'm part of the group. They want to buy my house. Thank you very much.
So we need to follow proper form. This is public comment. And so let's just stop at question and answering, please. Thank you.
The second thing that I'd like to talk about is the fact that in February 19th meeting, there was a discussion led by Commissioner Joe here to have claims published so that the citizens of LaPorte County can see what, where their dollars are going to be spent. Again, it's probably after the fact, but you know, at least we know where it was going to, where the money was going. That vote was two to one, as you recall. And Mr. Joe, or Commissioner Joe, you asked to have the IT person and our auditor here to work together, probably with yourself, and I think you said the executive secretary, to try to get some form of the claims to be published on the county website. Previously, it had been published in newspapers and that's pretty darn expensive, so you know, eliminate that thing. But I think as a citizen of LaPorte County and how my money is being spent, I'd like to know. I mean, I think it's important. Okay. Joe, you, in lieu of the fact that we haven't been able to find a way to publish that information, you have gone to Facebook and you've put the claims on the Facebook pages, which is excellent. I looked at that and I got a whole bunch of notes here and things like that. But I think it's important, and I just was discussing this with the auditor here, that we publish these dollar amounts, these claims. We all know, at least I think we all know, that we publish the salaries of all of the county employees. It's listed. You know, and I was saying, you know, the auditor makes 78.1, the assessor makes 75.5. 40.5, 41.5, 40.5. It's all out there. Salaries are 1.5 mil every time we meet. The claims are two thirds again, 2.4, 2.5 mil. More money there than on the payroll. So I want to just say, I think it's important. I think you're on the right track, sir. I don't know what is all happening behind the scenes here, but I ask personally, Mr. Auditor Mike, Mr. Joe, can you guys get together and see what we can do about getting that claim posted? I know you've been working hard at it and maybe we can get that done. It's only been, you know, 10 months. Also, I think, I saw a copy of the report. There's a field called descriptions on that report that's on the right hand side. 90% of the descriptions are omitted. I think it would be nice to have some input into that. I don't know who does all the entering of the bills. I call them bills. I'm a former controller, former auditor, former accountant. So you know, I speak his language over here. Mr. Mike, speak your language. But I would just like to see some working together. So there, when I worked for those groups, that group up there had a motto, working together to be the best. We need to do that.
It's a good motto.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Yep.
Public comment is still open. Anyone else from the public like to come up and speak?
My name is Sue Anteshevsky. I live at 101 Belden and here in LaPorte. I've waffled in my mind over the past month if I should appear or if I shouldn't. But after careful consideration, I feel it necessary to formally raise this concern as silence might be interpreted as acceptance. Specifically, I must address Commissioner Holyfield's public display of disdain towards the LaPorte County residents and the way he addresses the community. During the October 15th meeting, Commissioner Holyfield publicly referred to residents who share information online as, as I quote, or and I quote, cowardly losers on Facebook. Commissioner Holyfield, please remember that the residents of LaPorte County give you your voice and provide you this mandate. You are accountable to us. It is absolutely within the county's rights to express dissent or share information they believe is relevant, even if it conflicts with your perspective. With an approximate population of 111,000 across LaPorte County cities and townships, if you cannot represent citizens equally and without resorting to juvenile name calling, perhaps you should step down. The position on the council deserves respect, integrity and professionalism. Your behavior reflects on the entire community far behind, far beyond the county border. Furthermore, President Graham Rosa, when Commissioner Holyfield made those remarks, there was no condemnation of his lack of professionalism and decorum as you are as county president. You allowed the incident to occur without any feedback on public record. If you fail to recognize this is a serious issue, perhaps you too should consider resigning your seat. I implore you both to uphold a higher standard. Your words and actions resonate and extend beyond this chamber. This attitude is unfit for public service and is an embarrassment to our county and the people you serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment is still open. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Nothing, George?
Okay, we're going to close public comment. Moving on, department head comments. Do we have any department heads?
I've got one thing that I wanted to follow up on with our claims. Be happy to get with our auditor and try and get those published online. Right now, as Mr. Geralt said, I am, I post them on a Dropbox account and I share that link on my Facebook page just because it's a, that Dropbox link is pretty darn large, so it's hard to just give that out. But anyway, I update that for every meeting I have for the past couple of months. Or it would be nice to see that up on the county website. In regards to that, had an excellent point that was the next step that I wanted to take. So I would make a motion that for our claims, that the description box in that field there that we see on our claims docket have some sort of description filled in there next to each expense so that we can better show the public where that money's going for. A lot of times, you know, elected officials, we know in certain areas where that's going to, we can look at some of those account numbers and stuff and figure out if it's a utility bill or something like that. But especially just for that transparency for the county, you know, there's no, there's no harm in, you know, in filling in the entry box, it's already there. And you know, right now, I think it's pretty accurate, that's about 10% of the time, only about 10% of the time is that being filled in. So I'd like to see that filled in all the time. So that would be my motion.
Can I ask you just to amend it before we get a second?
Sure.
And that would be if Lau allows, you know, a descriptor in that description because I don't know what the front end users, so I guess if it's available to the folks who are inputting, then if you can just add that, if it works with the software.
Yeah, I'll include that in my motion. I believe it is.
I don't know.
Just because that field and box is there and I know some folks enter it in. But again, we've got about a 10% compliance rate right now and I'd like to see that number substantially higher.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to request. Consider three sick days for retiring employee of the EMS department.
I don't see them here tonight.
Mr. Fenshawmaker's in Indianapolis.
Yeah, he's in Indianapolis.
But we do know that the employee has retired. He did have six, three sick days accumulated and they do have the money within the department to pay for it.
So I would make a motion to approve that.
I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I'd also like to say, Scott Erickson, thank you for your service to the county and congratulations and hope you have a happy retirement.
Yes, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, old business. Consider bid recommendation for first floor bathrooms in the assessors' break room in the Hyler Building.
Good evening, Andrew Davis, LaPorte County Building and Maintenance Director.
Good afternoon. Reed Smith, Assistant Director of Facilities.
So we had five bids come in. We had, do you want numbers and names?
Names and numbers.
Okay. Taza Construction came in at $79,000. Gibson Lewis came in at 135,900. New Tech was 153,900. Larson Danielson, 139,995. Blue Sky was 108,447.7. The recommendation is Larson Danielson. Their bid was very detailed. They had a clarification sheet. They reached out with any questions that they had. New Tech was very detailed as well. The other three are not really in the consideration. They were not as detailed. There were some to be determined in their bids, which tells me that they are not accurate bids and we would have surprises at the end. So we would like to recommend Larson Danielson to.
They come in halfway?
About in the middle.
Okay.
The local company do have done a lot of work for the county. They do a good job.
Absolutely.
So since I've been on board as county attorney, we've had issues with not necessarily Larson Danielson, but other contractors. So if you approve this, what I would like to do is I'd like to be able to sit down with them and hammer out a contract. So it's, it's good because we've seen the issues that we've had with some things in the past. So it would be contingent upon an acceptance of a contract that agrees with you all and Larson Danielson. So I would ask that if you consider doing that, that would be great. So we can resolve any problems upfront before having problems in five years.
You need that in motion?
Yes. So it would be, so you're going to, if you're going to accept the bid, it's going to be contingent upon a contract.
Yes, I make a motion to accept the bid upon contingent of a contract and that's it.
I'll second for discussion.
So we have a motion and a second, open for discussion?
Right. So it looks like we have Taza down there at the bottom as an outlier and you already touched on some of that as far as a lot to be determined and whatnot, obviously, you know, we, large, open ended things, especially when you're looking at, you know, we had them at 79, the 108 for Blue Sky, next would be Gibson Lewis, 135, then Larson Daniel, 139, and then New Tech, 153. In looking at, like the Gibson and Larson are very close, 4,000, but then you have Blue Sky down at 108 for that 31,000. Is it material, is it just simply labor costs that are the main difference there? What?
They actually could not give us a number for electric and plumbing, so they had to be determined.
They specifically left open a certain part of the plumbing and electrical for any unforeseeable, you know, thing that we can't plan.
Okay. And then let's say for Larson Daniel specifically, but also if you remember for Gibson and New Tech, were their bids all inclusive as far as, were there any spots left open like Blue Sky and Taza had?
Gibson Lewis was not very detailed. It was basically, here you go. Larson Danielson did reach out with any questions that they had. New Tech did as well. I mean, extremely detailed in their bids as to what is what. We did have, I believe it was Gibson Lewis, there was a few things in their bid that said we would supply, which was not in the scope.
Okay. So, okay, so taking Gibson Lewis then out of the equation, so between New Tech and Larson, Larson's obviously the lower between the two. Larson doesn't have any of the, they're, I guess is close to all inclusive as you can get on this without any of those open ended things.
Yes. They were in contact with us, asking questions just to make sure anything on the scope, they were verifying everything.
All right. So in that case, it sounds like then out of the two, Larson Daniel and New Tech, those two were the most responsive to the act, what was actually put out there. And then of course Larson is the lower of the two, between those two that were actually the most responsive.
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay. You have any questions?
No, I'd just like to say that it's nice to see recently here, we're getting multiple bids on these projects. Where back in the past, we didn't have any bids because nobody wanted to deal with LaPorte County.
Yeah. I appreciate, appreciate all your hard work on this and making sure we solicited and got, and got back some decent, some options here. It's unfortunate a couple of these companies didn't, weren't as responsive as they could have been, but that's, that's the process and that's on them. So thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Or did you guys actually make a motion to?
Yes.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, consider proxy appointment for plan commission for one of the board members.
Board member for Joey Toholsky, who can't vote either. James Erwin, I spoke to him. He meets the criteria, so I'd like to nominate James Erwin to be the proxy vote for that.
Just to clarify, when you say criteria, he's a Democrat and he lives in the county?
Lives in the county, correct. Yep, yep.
I'll second that.
Yeah, Jim has served in other boards over the years, too.
I just didn't want anybody to read into that, that he meets the criteria, that he votes the same way as you do, as opposed to him voting his conscience.
Yes. No, he's a citizen of the county.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. New business. Consider 2026 commissioners meeting dates.
I make a motion, we accept these dates?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider USI engineering design contract for Bridge 180. Mitch Bishop will be presenting.
So the county, the county received roughly $1.6 million to replace Bridge 180. 180 is roughly two miles south of Hannah, the community of Hannah. It was advertised for engineering services and scored and USI came on top. So you have before you tonight is a contract for USI that needs to be signed and delivered to Indot's offices as soon as possible according to them. So it's going through the steps of the process. And this would be the procurement of engineering services for the project.
Just the services for the design work, correct?
Yeah. And then from there, there'd be also inspection and construction as well. And those times usually, from now to letting is usually about a five year process, as you know, from previous bridges. I think county has 11 now, federal aid projects, and we just applied for another one. So hopefully we'll have 12 here very soon. There's bridges in LaPorte County that need to be replaced, so thanks. Any questions?
So what would be the pleasure of this board?
I accept the recommendation of Mr. Bishop.
Do we have a second?
No.
So I'll step down as president and I'll second the motion. It's open for discussion.
Again, this is only for the design, correct?
Yeah. And how I usually do these is I go before council and there's like three phases of the project and normally, so the grant covers 80% of every phase. So I would seek 20% and I, we have 20% covered as well. I already went in front of council for 20% of the cost for engineering services. Once that is done, we'll go for inspection services and also construction dollars, the 20%. But this is over a five year period, so.
Thank you, Mitch. I know I've had my concerns about a company that's here before us here tonight. I know it was a few months ago where there was a contract we had to extend regarding them and we were, you know, up against the gun with Indot and not, you know, wasn't comfortable with moving forward with that, but that was a continuation of it existing when we weren't able to change midstream. Here we are tonight, understanding, we had a conversation earlier, I understand that, you know, their engineering or their design group is separate from their inspection group. But still, the parent company is the same parent company. Of course, obviously, we, you know, I've talked about the issues that I've had before with the bridge up on East Street in Michigan City with the inspection work that was done there, you know, using photographs that were many years out of date on a report. We obviously had the horrible situation with the bridge on 39, the bridge number 39, which we had to close down on 525, I think it was 525 East if memory serves, over the little kink key there, you know, massive, massive hole in the, in the, in the pylon there and, you know, you can see all that green grass through there, that massive hole from that, from that. And of course, we had school buses driving across that bridge every single day when school was in session. You know, we had to do an emergency closure and repair on that once that was found. You know, I still, and all the engineers I talked to, I, nobody knows how a large metal pylon that was encased with concrete gets eaten through in, you know, that very short period of time like that, but there it is. And obviously, some of the stuff, you know, we've heard from issues with them with the one sewer project, you know, so that's recently, that's kind of, you know, you know, this isn't a game up here, but if it was, you know, three strikes and you're out. So that's why I couldn't support this here tonight. It would be my opinion that we should go with either the number, the number two score as opposed to this, as opposed to this company, but you know, obviously we have a thing here and we'll see if it passes here this evening, but you know, I, to my knowledge, I don't think the companies have reached out to us or offered any apologies or anything on behalf of their, you know, the, you know, the work or lack thereof that was done in regard to, you know, these just three different incidents that I've described. Again, those are all very fresh in the past, you know, couple of years here, so you know, it just doesn't speak well for their company as a whole. And I can't, I can't divorce those issues from the parent company, even if it's just, you know, a separate division, it's still the same company.
I understand.
Do you have an issue using them for the design?
We've, we've used them for design before for bridge design and had successful projects. For instance, Otis Road Bridge, it came out. It's a beautiful bridge, a lot of good compliments and no issues whatsoever for that bridge.
Okay, thank you.
So, and so has Indot gone after them for their, for their engineering?
No, actually, Indot. No, actually, Indot, so
Where are they ranked in Indot?
As part of the scoring, and you see, all see the scoring sheets before, I believe. There's past performance scores, and Indot assigns those, and they are actually the top third of all the, maybe, maybe the top two. There's eight of them that applied, that responded to the RFP. So they were like number two out of eight, I think, from Indot. So they're high on Indot's list
Okay.
For design, but.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Nay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Moving on to C, cancellation, or moving of our December, I think it's fourth?
The third.
Third day.
Yeah, we'll be at the ICC convention in Indianapolis. And if we do it on the 10th, the following week, we have, we're on the 17th, and after that, the 24th and 31st are holidays. So I, I would recommend that, provided we can get the claims and payrolls taken care of, we forego the December 3rd meeting and just have one meeting in December.
I'm fine with that. It's a motion.
Motion, yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And just for the public certification, there are a few things like payroll, which there's an existing ordinance in La Porte County that authorizes expedited payment on things like payroll. So we'll be, what'll happen is we'll just approve that cycle, that payroll cycle after the fact, at the following meeting. So everybody will be getting their checks on time. There won't be any delays or anything like that.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.